It's called the July Common Council Meeting to Order. Would our scouts like to come up and lead us in the pledge? I would have asked you a little earlier, but you kind of... No, you're a pass. Okay, that's fine. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the sacred covenant for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please conduct the roll call. Heidi, Linker, Nargie, here. Reynolds, Campbell, Brown, Williamson, there. Downing, there. Allison Meyer. Court and President. First item of the conference is the approval of the June Common Council Minutes. Mr. Campbell?
I move that the minutes be approved as communicated.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
It's a matter of necessity to approve the June Council Minutes. Any comments on those from members of council? All those in favor of approval of the minutes as communicated say aye. Thank you. Presentation and disposal of claims?
Here and none.
Presentations of petitions and communications?
Here and none.
Reports the city offices on file in the clerk's office?
Water Works Department monthly may. Water Pollution Control Department monthly may. Police Department monthly may. Police Maintenance Department monthly may.
Thank you. And as a reminder to the public, those ordinances are available for viewing to the joint media with the office at the clerk's office. We have no ordinances for second reading this evening, so we're jumping right in with our one ordinance for first reading, Ordinance 2015-16.
An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lafayette, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,600,000 and approving, authorizing, other actions in respect thereto.
Mr. Cleaver?
I move that we hear Ordinance 2015-16 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Heidi?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, you have before you the ordinance for first reading regarding the 101 Main Street project that I'm sure you've heard a lot about by now, not only from caucus, but various articles in the newspaper and a lot of discussion that will be taking place downtown. It is about a $24.5 million project. It will be a regional headquarters for the old National Bank along with the branch and about 94 luxury apartments and some commercial space also. We're very, very excited about this project. We'll have some presentations for you here just shortly. As you know, we've been working diligently on building our downtown. We have a wonderful downtown. We've been working on riverfront development through the Wabash River Enhancement Corporation that came into existence in 2005 with a generous grant for more central health services that helped create that group. And it's a community group of Lafayette, West Lafayette, Tippecanoe County, Purdue, Ivy Tech, and various citizens. And so this project has an opportunity to really begin that phase of riverfront development for us where we actually see a project take place. In conjunction with it, we plan to build a riverfront promenade. It was identified in the riverfront plan that was completed by Wallace Robertson Todd out of Philadelphia, which was the firm that was hired, again, through a very generous grant of North Central Health Services, to develop the riverfront and identify those projects and help give us a pathway and a process to begin to move forward. So over the last several years, we've done a lot of planning, we've done a lot of studies, we've done significant land acquisition. But this here becomes the first opportunity in conjunction with this wonderful project to really build something. And we're excited because we think it's going to be another amenity for downtown with attract people. We're also going to be able to build a ramp now on the east side of the Greeley Plaza that will attach to the promenade and for handicap accessibility, bikes, strollers. All those things that we wanted to get done that are really hard to do as individual pieces is now coming together with this wonderful development. It's going to create that synergy and that economy of scale that will allow us to complete this. Another interesting piece that I want to make mention of again, but I don't want it because I don't want it to be lost on all this, as you know, West Lafayette is doing a State Street master plan, a very ambitious plan for redevelopment of the State Street and some other lands through the University, which comes all the way down, down the hill in State Street there to North River Road. Because we all do work together through this Wabash River Enhancement Corporation, again, we went to North Central Health Services and they were very generous in giving us a grant that allows us to do the engineering and all the schematic work for our ramp, for the riverfront promenade, down over into West Lafayette to Tapawingo Park, and then up State Street and right there to North River Road to ensure that everything that we're doing in Lafayette, West Lafayette, and Purdue and all those plans are coming together to ensure that we are able to have that movement of people at Purdue and students and bikes and pedestrians going back and forth between Greeley Plaza, the Myers Bridge, the promenade, Tapawingo Park, and the State Street project. So this really is kind of one of the once-in-a-lifetime opportunities when all of this is coming together at the same time where we're able to work collaboratively to get this done. And so we certainly appreciate your support on this. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Craig Von Daleen, and he's going to make the first presentation on the actual project. After that, I'll be calling up Jason Simler of H.J. Umball to talk about the financial piece. And then Dennis Otten is here from Bose McKinnon Evans. You heard from him earlier, but he is certainly here. He can go with a full presentation again, or if you'd just like to ask him any questions or he can hit the highlights just on the legal process that we followed to get to this point. So with that, I'll turn it over to Craig.
You want the screen down now?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. Fine.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Calm down, there. We don't try to want that. I mean, it's...
It gets too damn big. There you go.
Thank you very much for having me here, especially if you're not forced. I'm going to speak to you about 101 Main Street. The first thing is to give a brief background on our company. Hi, my name's Craig Von Daleen. I'm Director of Development for our small family company called Daleen Real Estate. Started off as a property contractor in Indianapolis in 2005 by buying a community center and converting it into apartments and offices in the basement. And then moved on to a piece of property across the street that was surplus land that we also received. These are all urban mixed-use projects. This project is called Fletcher Place Terrace. Our first project, Fletcher Place Bloss, was eight apartments over office space and won an award from the River of Landmarks for Gaffer for Use. Our second project, Fletcher Place Terrace, is often used as an example by the Indian apolis Department of Recreation Division that's excellent in building mixed-use developments. The recession came when we closed down a little bit, and as the recession was coming out, which was including, we bought a building in Fletcher in Thomas Square called Mercky Arts Center. The Mercky Arts Center has become one of the most important buildings in Thomas Square and was an integral part of the revitalization of Thomas Square and the community of Indianapolis in downtown area. When we took it over in 2009, it was all a section of the city, and after about two years of work and investment, it is now 170 and has been built for the last two years. We then moved on to another larger mixed-use project called Hinch, which is also in the Thomas Square area of Lanley and Fletcher Place called the Rose Garden. It is a mixed-use project, very similar to the project that we proposed here in Lafayette. It has been very successful. It is also helping square redevelopment of Fletcher Place Terrace, which is now one of the top 10 food corridors in the country according to the corridors magazine. So our project is stimulating the revitalization of the following projects in Indianapolis. And to a point where it now is getting national headlines and it's become quite a destination for Indianapolis. We're following that project up with a project called Slate, which is also on Virginia Avenue corridor in Indianapolis. It's another mixed-use project over retail with apartments, luxury apartments over what we consider to be a very high-quality retail. It is on the cultural trail in Indianapolis as well as Hinch. As we started doing these projects, we realized that we didn't want to just work in Indianapolis, so we started looking at other communities in Indiana to develop in because we really like the concept of walking towards downtown community. So we started looking out at the rest of the state of Indiana, trying to find some really good burgeoning, walking, that profitable downtown area where we could do our type of development, help also stimulate the revitalization of that type of an area. One of the places we visited happened to be Lafayette. And we were very pleased to find the site at 101 Main, which was, by the way, our first choice for sites to work on in anywhere in Indiana outside of Indianapolis. And we, through a period of relationships that we already had, were able to get in touch with old National Bank, talk to them about the project that we wanted to do. They were also very excited, and then if they offered that they could, we lost signal. They offered that they would also move their regional headquarters into the building and then have a bank branch as part of our project, which makes our project down much more viable, would also keep them in the downtown area if we could fully use them here as well. That's a view of the bank, and then this is the view of the site's project where the apartments in a retail space will be along Greeley Plaza. The first floor of the building along Greeley Plaza will be a retail space where already in communication and talking with the local restaurants who will open up a wine dining establishment there with outdoor dining on Greeley Plaza, which we think will also help revive, revitalize, keep, make Greeley Plaza more active space if people have a Greeley Plaza in this block. The project overview, start first with the plan. The apartments are a five-story building that wrap around the bank and address Greeley Plaza and then have two stores to the river and West Lafayette. And then the bank itself is on the corner of Columbia and Second Street. It's a two-story building. The first floor of the building is parking, the bank branch, and the retail. And then the basement of the building is all parking just for the apartments. Plan showing that parking on the first, this is just at the street level, this parking behind the bank branch and then the tenant space, which is identified there on the first floor. That's for the retail portion of the building. And then the basement of the building is all parking. Quick overview, it is a $24.5 million I call it mixed-over development, features 99 luxury apartments with 13 studios, 63 one-bedrooms, 23 two-bedroom apartments, the old National Bank's regional headquarters and branch, 108 private garage parking space, and 34 main level garages inside parking spaces. That's my entire presentation for the first reading. Thank you very much.
As you can see, as we said, Craig tried to keep it a reasonable amount of time tonight, but it is a very, very, as you can see, striking building with a lot of glass, and he showed me some of the other thoughts that they have, and it's going to be an impressive appearance coming in, leaving and coming into downtown Lafayette, so we're certainly very excited about that. Next, I'd like to bring up Jason Simler with H.J. Umball, and he will describe to you how the financing and how the bond issue on this will work.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. This is Mayor Simler. This is Jason Simler. I'm a partner at the H.J. Umball Associates. And in front of you, you should have a report that we had prepared to go to the financing. I'll just kind of quickly go to these numbers, be happy to answer any questions that you may have as we're going through them. But if you turn to page two, you heard that they're looking at the combination of retail and residential development, about $24.5 million cost. We've estimated that the assessed value that they'll be paying property taxes on is about $16,380,000. That's what the assessed value will be once it's built and constructed. And we're assuming that, based upon talking to the developer, we're anticipating that that will be built by January 1, 2018, for taxes payable in 2019. Based upon the information provided from the developer on the residential and commercial property, we're looking at that will pay taxes of an annual amount of $347,000. Page three looks at the bond issue that's being proposed. The documents that you have in front of you that you've been discussing show a maximum bond issue of $4,600,000. Right now, based on preliminary numbers, we're looking at a bond issue of about $4,520,000. What that consists of, you kind of start from the bottom and kind of work your way up. You have issuance costs, underwriters of discount, the person who's going to be trying to place these bonds, finding a buyer, will have some fees. So that total about $220,000 of bond issuance costs and contingencies and running buyers' discount. We set aside about $178,000 of capitalized interest. Again, we're not anticipating that this building will be built and assessed till '18, '19, so there'll be a couple of years where it's under construction, take a year for it to get assessed. So help with the cash flow of the redevelopment commission, because the redevelopment commission does have a number of other projects, kind of pay-as-you-go that they're working on. We are going to use some of the bond proceeds and set them aside to pay interest during that first year to help with cash flow. So that's what that capitalized interest is. We're also setting aside one year's annual payment. It's called the debt service reserve. It's about $357,000. That's to protect you and also protect the purchaser who's buying the bonds. That way, if taxes come in late, your settlement comes in late for whatever reason, there's money set aside to make sure that bond payment gets paid. And that leaves the $3.8 million left over for projects cost. We're looking at funding about $3 million as an incentive for developer and about $800,000 for the city projects that were discussed. Page four looks at how that bond issue is anticipated to be paid back. We're looking at a 20-year bond issue. We're assuming that these bonds will close between August or September timeframe. Right now, I'm seeing an assumed interest rate of 4.25% over that time period. If you were to go out in the market today, I would anticipate that these rates would be lower, but you're not knowing what the market's going to be doing between now and August, September. I've increased rates a little bit just to allow some room for market risk. But you can look from the far right side, based upon these assumptions, the annual debt service is about $350,000 a year. So again, the estimated tax increment from the development itself is about $347,000, so it almost funds the entire project, not only the river project, but the city's project as well. But the security behind these bonds is a tax increment from four different allocation areas that the city has. If you turn to page five, we're actually pledging the tax increment from the central allocation area, the North Ninth Street allocation area, and Creasy Brady and Creasy Trees. So you can see the second column right there, the estimated tax increment from those four areas bring in a little over $8.4 million right now, just based upon the investments and the tax there's or currently paying taxes right now, $8.4 million. And it kind of gradually increases until about 2019, and then you see it jumps to $8.7 million. That's going to be anticipating this development coming onto the tax rolls, increasing your tax increment. So again, this is just based upon what's there now in paying taxes. Doesn't include any developments under construction right now or known to be built in the near future. With that tax increment, though, the redevelopment commission does have a few other bonds that are outstanding, so we're accounted for those. And then you can see, oh, sorry, 2015 bonds, if you decide to go forward and proceed. And you can see towards the right side of the column, the estimated tax increment remaining. So even after paying the outstanding bonds that the redevelopment commission has currently issued, and these 2015 bonds, you can still see there's sufficient revenue that makes those bond payments and still allow for revenue to be available for the other projects that the redevelopment commission is doing throughout the city. And then page six just shows kind of the tax increment that's being generated from each of the four different areas that total up at $8.4 million. But these bonds, again, they're just secured from the tax increment from the area. We're not asking to have any property tax backup or anything like that. It's just all just from the tax increment from these areas. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments from council?
Would you go over again the concept where you weren't going to do anything until the year 2017, I think you said, with monies that were coming in or something?
Yes, if you look at page four, I believe, that's the repayment structure of the bonds. And we're looking at issuing later this fall, around August, September, maybe October. Once we issue those bonds, you'll start accruing interest. Interest will be due. So the first payment on those bonds, we do February 2016, and then you'll have another payment due August 2016. But the redevelopment commission has a number of projects that are already kind of in line that they have their current revenue stream that they're anticipating that's kind of already obligated. So we're setting aside enough money to make those first two payments, which were estimated at $178,000 from bond proceeds to make those first two payments. So the redevelopment commission doesn't have to use any of the cash on hand to pay for it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to introduce at this time Dennis Otten from Bose McKinnon Evans that will talk about the legal process that we followed to get us to this point and what the next few steps are. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Dennis Otten with Bose McKinnon Evans. We're bond counsel on this transaction. Before you tonight is a proposed ordinance that authorizes the issuance of the bonds for the project that Jason just described and that Craig just described, up to $4.6 million to fund the project. To give you an idea of where we're at in this process, there's a number of approvals that need to be obtained, and we're pretty much close to being through those approvals, subject to getting council approval. Since this does involve tax increment dollars that will be used to pay the debt service on these bonds, we first gone to the redevelopment commission to amend their plan to just add this project to the plan. By law, we have to update their economic development plan to add this project to the list. So we've been to the redevelopment commission. We've also gone to the area plan commission that has to approve the project as well. And you'll see on your agenda tonight, you have what I'll call a companion resolution. That's Resolution 2015-11, and that will be your approval of that amendment to the plan for this project. We'll then go back to the redevelopment commission in a public hearing to finally approve a resolution that will add that project to the economic development plan of the commission and also do a pledge of the tip revenues. Earlier today, the Economic Development Commission met, and by law, for this type of financing, they first need to meet, consider the project in the hold of public hearing, and then recommend to the council moving forward with a bond ordinance. They met this morning at 11:00 a.m., held their public hearing, pretty much heard the same presentation that you just heard, and did adopt their resolution. So before you tonight with the ordinance, it approves forms of financing documents, trust indenture, financing agreement, economic development agreement, and authorizes the execution of those by the various city officials. There's a few blanks in those. Those will be filled in once we actually do the pricing of the bonds, and they'll be subject to council approval, legal council approval as well, when the time comes to close the bond issue. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the ordinance.
Are all of the documents that Mr. Simler presented to us contained in this ordinance?
The document that Mr. Simler provided to you is a, I would call it a financial report. We discussed with Umball Associates, I'll call them the financing parameters for purposes of the ordinance, to make sure that the numbers in the ordinance reflect what's expected in that accounting report. So in terms of the maximum size of the bond issue, the maximum amount of the interest rate that's contemplated are contained within the ordinance. So there's a consistency there.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments or questions from council from anybody that presented this evening regarding this ordinance? Comments from the public regarding Ordinance 2015-16? Seeing none, the clerk please conduct a roll call vote. Heidi?
Aye.
Linker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero. Thank you. Okay, another reminder, resolution is this evening. Our first resolution is 2015-09.
The city of Lafayette should participate in Indiana's Clean Community Program.
Mr. Brown?
Madam President, I move that we hear and approve...
Resolution.
Resolution 2015-09.
Thank you. Mrs. Williamson?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, before you is a resolution for the city of Lafayette to participate in the Indiana Clean Community Program. As most of you know, we take a very progressive approach here in the city of Lafayette to the way that we try to protect our natural resource and be good environmental stewards, and we do a lot of environmentally friendly practices. As you may remember, the time goes quick. Two or three months ago, there were some gentlemen here, and the city was presented another award for our environmentally friendly practices that we do and some of the milestones that we have achieved. And with this, we're actually trying to take that to the next level where we'll be participating with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management to actually become designated as an Indiana Clean Community. Part of that process is we have to go through several steps. One of them is getting a recommendation letter, which Mr. Tom Easterday of Subaru provided for us. As you know, Subaru is a very environmentally conscious business in our community and is a zero landfill. And Mr. Easterday saw what we were doing and what we wanted to do, and he was gracious enough on behalf of Subaru to submit our recommendation letter. And we also need a resolution from the council stating that the council is willing to participate and supports the idea of the city of Lafayette and its staff wanting to be designated as an Indiana Clean Community. And so we would appreciate your support of this resolution.
Thank you. Comments or questions from council for the mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public comments on Resolution 2015-09? Seeing none, the clerk please conduct a roll call vote. Heidi?
Aye.
Linker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero. Thank you. Another reminder, Resolution 2015-10.
A resolution declaring the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application by Stotter Development LLC for property tax abatement. Stotter Development LLC.
Thank you. Mrs. Nargie?
I move that we hear and approve Resolution 2015-10. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam President? Oh, yes, Mr. Campbell.
Do we need an addendum or some comment here about, I think that the gentleman admitted his addition problems? And I thought I saw something here about the number of employees. I think he is asking or requesting four employees.
There was a scrudner there that was identified at the caucus, you're correct. And I think the number of employees was going to be from 50-something to 47.
Right.
And Mr. Stotter did make that correction on the original and initial date.
Okay.
That night after caucus.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, yes, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Ladies and gentlemen, here you have a resolution. As you know, the city of Lafayette and all of Tippecanoe County have worked very hard to create a competitive economic development environment where businesses continue to grow and to be successful, for businesses that we have here, and then to also land new businesses like the GE Jet Aviation Facility. But furthering you tonight is a resolution that's really a little bit different. It's a resolution for warehouse space, and with our continued growth and our continued successes, warehouse space has become a really hot commodity for our community. In fact, we're still in need of additional warehouse space. The Stotter Corporation that you have before you came to the community several years ago and built a significant warehouse facility out on the corner of US 52 and Veterans Memorial Parkway. Their primary customer is Tate and Lyle, which is a significant employer here in our community and has also done significant expansions and upgrades over the last few years. So tonight, we have before you a resolution that plan is to add about 100,000 square feet down the road in Park, our Certified Industrial Park, that actually was built as a spec and sat there for a while, but it's actually full now also. And so we really need to try to promote this type of development and warehouse opportunities because we're going to continue to need it. So I would appreciate everyone's support on this resolution. And at this time, I'd like to introduce to you Dick Stotter, one of the principals. And he'll be here to tell you a little bit more about the project and why it's necessary.
Thank you for having me here, council members. We, I am one of the partners in Stotter Development and also president of our operating company, 307 Corporation. 307 Corporation came to Lafayette in 2000 when we won a bid to do warehousing and distribution services for Taitan Lyle. And at that time, we employed 28 to 30 people. We operated in rental space for five years. In 2005, Taitan Lyle's growth had come to the point where we needed to expand, and that was not adequate expansion, rental facilities in Lafayette. So we constructed a 400,000-square-foot facility and have been in that facility for the last 10 years. And during that period of time, our employment count has grown by 10. And during that period of time, as you know, Taitan Lyle has expanded in a number of ways, requiring additional distribution services by us. Now, 307 Corporation contracts on a periodic basis with Taitan Lyle. And there are others, of course, that could do this, but we have right now some of the best space for food-grade quality warehousing in the City of Lafayette. And that's a competitive advantage for us to maintain our customer, Taitan Lyle. Taitan Lyle is also expanding her production facilities at this time and have a very, their production will be online within the next few months, and they're going to need this expansion to be able to maintain the production flow from their production facility to a temporary storage point, which is our warehouse, before it can be released to distribution to all over the country. In addition to Taitan Lyle, Stotter Development and 307 Corporation also contract with Archery Daniel Midland Company, Cigaza Packaging, and Midland Paper. Cigaza Packaging and Midland Paper are support services to Taitan Lyle. And it makes economic and transportation sense and logistics sense for us to handle those materials, paper bags, cardboard, and other things that go into the production. ADM is a customer of Taitan Lyle, and so product are produced by Taitan Lyle, purchased by ADM. We'd be surprised at the distribution services for them. Each of those companies are growing, and we are being squeezed to come up with additional space. As we look out around the community to rent additional space, there is in various locations, and in fact, right now, we are leasing additional space, but it's in very small increments of 20,000 to 30,000 square foot increments. And it's a little bit difficult for us to operate economically in those situations with the commodities that we store and distribute for Taitan Lyle. So, and for ADM. So we saw this need to create this additional 100,000 square feet addition to our building. And we're very thankful that you are considering our application for tax abatement. It helps us to stay competitive in, not only with our current customers, but also anybody else that might be looking to Lafayette for expansion of their production or building new plants. There is, as the mayor pointed out, a strong need for warehousing services. In that, I'd like to kind of explain that just a little bit. Warehousing services in the sense that we do it is, we don't build a building and lease it to someone else to operate. We actually lease it to ourselves to operate. But we provide for our customers something that they don't want to do themselves. They don't want to manage the flow of the goods through a facility. Like to produce it and then get it out, and they allow us to do that. There are other companies that around the world that do that, have that same model, and they look for us to, 3PLs, third-party logistics companies, to do this. That's the service we provide. Now, we, the, many, there are a lot of development companies out there like Stotter Development who are willing to build a building, but it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. And Lafayette and my hometown of Decatur, Illinois, experience the same difficulty in that I don't build a building unless I have a good customer for it, particularly in today's banking environment. And a good customer won't come often unless they have space. So our intent here is to provide space for existing business in Lafayette and also to try to branch out a little bit and provide additional services for current Lafayette businesses in any additional space that is not being consumed by Taitan Lyle. So with that, if you'd like, I can answer any questions you'd like, or if you'd like me to just sit down and be quiet.
Questions of Mr. Stotter this evening? Mr. Brown?
Yes, one. I'd like you to pull out your crystal ball and tell me, do you anticipate further expansion or do you anticipate further competition from other companies?
Yes, we fully anticipate further competition. The Warehouse of Lafayette is a good friend of ours. Our first five years, we leased their space, and then, and we are actually in a part of their space, the new construction space they're doing. But they are a competitor of ours in a certain sense. We anticipate, as the products flow through our facility at a greater and greater rate, that forces us to hire additional employees, and we're looking forward to hiring employees. We have a very conservative estimate of this expansion creating four new jobs. My original math said nine, and that's where my mistake came in my addition. We went back to a more conservative approach, but I suspect that this will increase our headcount at our facility. And they're good jobs. We've very much enjoyed our existence here in Lafayette. The employees that we've been able to find are wonderful, and it's been a really wonderful relationship. And I'd like to say that we're very excited to be a part of Lafayette. When you look at many other communities around, particularly in Illinois, you don't see the growth that we see here. It's been a wonderful experience for us to be a part of it.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Stotter.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council regarding this resolution? Public comments on Resolution 2015-10? Seeing none, with the clerk please conduct a roll call vote. Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion for a public hearing to be set, to be set regarding this resolution on August 3 at 7:01.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Brown.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so there will be a public hearing over Resolution 2015-10, August 3 at 7:01 p.m. Thank you. All right, moving on to Resolution 2015-11.
A resolution of the common council, the City of Lafayette, Indiana, approving Resolution Number LCR 2015-4 of the City of Lafayette Redevelopment Commission, which made certain amendments to the economic development area and to the order of the Area Plan Commission of Tupi Kinyu County, Indiana, related thereto.
Mrs. Williamson?
I move to pass this resolution number 2015-11.
Thank you, Mr. Downing.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Carson?
Good evening, Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. This is Resolution 2015-11, as Dennis Otten pointed out, our legal counsel for the 101 Main Street project and the TIF bond here. This is the companion resolution that our Redevelopment Commission passed to include the 101 Main Street project in our TIF plan. So again, this is asking your approval to include this project in our TIF plan for the consolidated free CTE.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Questions of Mr. Carson this evening? Thank you.
Thank you.
For that comment regarding Resolution 2015-11? Okay, seeing none, with the clerk please conduct a roll call vote. Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero. Thank you. Reports to standing committees this evening? Reports by the mayor? Okay, miscellaneous and new business? We do have two companies for compliance statements this evening. Mr. Carson is going to introduce those to us.
Yes, we have two companies here, Non-Shond Lumen Company and Alcoa. Both of them had requested extensions for their filings and such. So the first one you have here is Non-Shond Lumen, which has a real estate and personal property abatement. The real estate is for 10 years. They exceeded their real estate investment, and they also exceeded their job creation. They promised 60 jobs and created 211. So the Redevelopment Commission found them in compliance.
I would say so. Okay, so this is for real estate and personal property together, or just real estate?
This was for real estate only.
So the motion to find Non-Shond real estate in compliance?
Opposed.
Mrs. Williamson?
Aye.
Second, Mr. Campbell?
Please.
Okay, comments or questions from council regarding this compliance? Comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor of finding Non-Shond in compliance signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
And the second was for personal property for Non-Shond, and that was for a 10-year period. They exceeded their equipment investment, and again, they pledged 60 jobs and created 211. The Redevelopment Commission found them in compliance.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, motion for compliance?
So.
Mrs. Williamson?
Aye.
Comments from council? Comments from public regarding finding Non-Shond personal property in compliance? All those in favor of finding Non-Shond personal property in compliance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. They are found in compliance. All right, and last?
And then we have Alcoa, which has a personal property tax abatement for a 10-year period for their lithium alloy project. They exceeded their pledge and projected investment, and they have created so far 29 jobs out of the 75 that they're projected to create. This is their first year of compliance, so they're just now getting the project up and going, and they have the 10-year periods to create these jobs. So the Redevelopment Commission found them in substantial compliance as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Campbell, motion for compliance?
So.
Mrs. Williamson?
Aye.
Comments from council? Comments from the public on finding Alcoa personal property in substantial compliance? All those in favor of finding Alcoa in substantial compliance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Alcoa is found in compliance. Thank you, Mr. Carson. I'm going to turn, it is a little much of a morning this evening, to introduce an exciting project headed our way in our city, over the comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian plan.
Yes, thank you. This evening, we have a short presentation from Jason Griffin from Butler, Seifert, and Fairman, and Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, we had, most of you were there to see the longer version. Tonight, it's going to kind of give you the outcomes and kind of a shorter version. There's some room rooms outside in the hallway, in the lobby area for you to go over, and we also have the executive summary on our city website, which is very, very thick and long, which that's why I didn't commit copies to everyone, as I told you the other night. So for those of you that wanted to see the draft plan, the draft final plan, it's up and, you know, it's very good, and we're very, very proud of this project. So Jason, would you like to kind of?
Thank you, Cindy. Give me a minute just to kind of get the presentation set up here.
This is going to be on the screen too.
I know. I'm going to look at it.
Okay, all right.
Whoa.
I've spent my life, I think.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, and thank you to the community and city councilors for the opportunity to assist you in this very important project for the citizens of Lafayette. As Cindy mentioned, we put together quite an extensive document here, and you guys did receive the executive summary. I'm going to try and brief in just a quick synopsis of the project. I will say that this project is a supplement of the 2012 Trails Plan that was done, which outlined over 64 miles of shared use paths. So this is in addition to that project. I am Jason Griffin with Butler, Fairman, and Seifert, project manager and landscape architect. I also have Ryan Smith joining me tonight from our Lafayette office, and will be available afterwards if there's any questions or anything. So just briefly, why did we undertake, or why did Lafayette undertake this project? Well, there's four traits that we find that a community has that has these improved facilities and developments, improved health benefits, economic development, environmental benefits, and better quality of life. And really, it boils down to a better quality of life, which helps to retain citizens, attract new citizens, which also helps attract new businesses and retain businesses, which is really important. And also safety. This is just something kind of illustrating, safety for pedestrians and bicyclists in our roadways is important and another reason that we undertook this. It's a year-long process, five distinct phases to the project. We undertook site inventory. We went out in the community, looked at existing, existing measurements, geometry of roadways, looking at cultural features, natural features, really just what's in the community, what's there, what's existing. We also did some public open houses. We had some stakeholder meetings, and we did a public survey during that phase that was open for two months, and we had over 440 people respond to that survey. Then we took that information, analyzed it, used some level of service calculators and things to just look at opportunities and constraints, what was working well, what wasn't, or what was working well and what wasn't, and created a draft plan from that and took that to the public, a 50% draft plan to the public. Also throughout, we had a steering committee and an advisory committee that met throughout that helped also guide the project. Then we revised that from the input we got from the public steering committee and the advisory committee, and did a 75% public draft plan, took that to the public, and that created our final master plan, which brings us to why we're here today, which is the adoption. So the final plan, just quickly, before I get into the final plan, there were six different types of facilities that we outlined with over 35 corridors that we actually had for improvement. This happens to be example of a shared lane, shared roadway is one type of facility for lower-volume roadways. And then a bicycle boulevard, which is kind of the next step up. We're doing some intersection treatments, maybe to lower some volumes of cars, but still shared roadway, the shero in the middle of the road, showing that bikes are allowed to use the roadway. Also, this is an intersection improvement that we've shown along the bicycle boulevard to help with crossing of a street. And then bike lanes where maybe a little bit higher volume of roadway, a little higher speed, but giving the bike bicyclists his own space along the roadway. And then I think we're familiar with shared use paths. This happens to be a picture of Munger Trail here in Lafayette. So that would be where we have situations where maybe the road speeds or volume is so high that we're just not going to recommend something along that roadway that we need to really look at separating. And here is one where maybe there's not enough room on a roadway to actually get the separation we need, but we still, because of the volume and the amount of traffic, we're showing a barrier to protect the people in the facility. And so with that being said, we did divide the city into four different quadrants to look at in more detail. I'm not going to go over every single route. It is online. It is on the project website, www.lafayettebikeandped.com. And here is one where maybe there's not enough room on a roadway to actually get the separation we need, but we still, because of the volume and the amount of traffic, we're showing a barrier to protect the people in the facility. And so with that being said, we did divide the city into four different quadrants to look at in more detail. I'm not going to go over every single route. It is online, it is on the project website, www.lafayettebikinedad.com. And just some highlights here, Union Street is one east-west route where we recommended bike lanes. I will also point out that on here, the dashed gray lines are the proposed trails from the 2012 plan, so we're showing in certain instances where we're connecting into those. Moving on, we had 14th Street is a major connector up the valley, 10th Street to South Street connecting into 9th, which is also another major connector, 18th, and then Ferry becomes a major connector east-west into the downtown. Here's the protected bike lanes I talked about along South Street. We felt that that was important because there's a lot of goods and services that people want to get out to, and there's also a lot of jobs for people that maybe don't have cars or maybe have, you know, economic challenges with maintaining cars, even younger generations such as high schoolers and things. And there are people walking out there right now, so we're showing that being a connection. Most of this east section, we also are recommending just due to some of the volumes that we're seeing in development in the area and speeds, that we felt that this section of the city lent itself more to sticking with the shared use path to make connections throughout this And then finally, south, there are already some existing separated trails along 18th and Concord out to the mall. And we're just, we've got some connections we're showing along Clickingham and then Brady Lane. And so with that being said, I'm going to move on. That's the infrastructure plan. But in total, we're outlining over 52 miles of Bikinedad facilities. When you couple that with the 2012 Trails Plan, you're talking over 100 miles of connections, which is really significant for the community. This summary of cost estimate, approximately $8 million. Now, I say that, that's over 20 years. This is a living document as well. Maybe there's developers that come along that might be willing to help pay for some of that. We've also outlined funding sources, potential funding sources. There are TAP grants, which would split that 80/20, so 80% federal, 20% local. So when you see that 8 million, that's not just the total for the community, that's the total project, but not necessarily what the cost of the, that the community would end up paying. We also created a priority route rating system. I'm just showing one quadrant here, but for each of the quadrants, there is a priority route rating system. Each section was assigned a point value based on different criteria. So whether there were bus stops, whether there was a vital link that connected to two or more, whether it connected to a desired destination spot within the city, which was identified in the public survey. So there are other criteria as well, but there was a total of 10 points that you could get, and so the eight is what we're showing here is the highest we have for now. It is, will change as other things become developed. So if you, you know, you put a particular segment in, and then it makes now something connected to or more, now it gets a higher point total, so the point values can go up and change as things are input, so you continue to create things that are connected to one And then finally, the last slide really talking about the infrastructure or engineer, the infrastructure plan, but a little hard to see here, but there are blue corridors or routes shown on here in orange. This also has the 2012 bike plan in here as well. So when you look at this, the majority of these routes, the blue represents beginning to intermediate level based on a bicycle level of service calculator. And so what we're showing is that most of these routes would be for beginner to intermediate level riders, and there's quite a few connections and destinations. There is one area I would point out, that Third and Fourth Street, those are advanced rider routes based on just volume and constraints that we had there. But Fifth is a lower-volume connector that would go through for making connection through the downtown area. And so I've talked a lot about infrastructure and creating spaces for people to ride in, but it's also important not only to create that infrastructure, but to have programs and policies in place that help sustain and support that infrastructure system. And so we base our recommendations in the document for programs and policies for the community to develop. They're based on the five Es, education, encouragement, enforcement, engineering, and evaluation. And so I think the next slide maybe gives a little better representation. This just happens to be the League of American Bicyclists. They have a rating system based on the five Es. They've made some generalized goals for communities based on population and how much you do, to what level of award you would get. But what I think the thing here to show is, is that as you do more and more of these five Es, the key outcomes are more ridership, more use, less crashes, less fatalities, which is really what it's about, is safety. So these help support and sustain the engineering. And finally, there is a section on standards, signage, widths, markings, other infrastructure, bicycle parking, and things like that. And so to wrap it all up, I wanted to leave you with this illustration that kind of shows why the infrastructure, why the programs and policies are important to go with the infrastructure. Because if you have good infrastructure, it's not maintained, people aren't educated to not park in there, or other things, you know, it won't work. So there needs to be a complete system, enforcement, all that kind of good stuff. So thank you again very much. I appreciate your opportunity to talk to you tonight. I'll turn it back over to Cindy and the council for any questions. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The, what is your, there is a bike lane on Union. Well, there's an existing one now that goes from basically the bridge to 21st Street, but then from there, it over to Creasy is recommended bike lanes. And along Fairman as well.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I want to extend a special thank you to Mrs. Murray and all the members of the committee who worked so hard on this very impressive plan. I think it's something that will really benefit the community, and that the public has mentioned they really would like to see in place. The official road almost will be next month, at the August 3, August 3, I want to make sure I have the right date. So Mr. Griffin did say he and his team would be available afterwards if you had questions regarding the presentation. And Mrs. Murray previously mentioned that the schematics are out in the hallway. I encourage you to take a look. Anything else you want to add to that? Thank you for all your work, too. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are moving on to any reports of councilmen. Okay, we will move on to public comments this evening. As a reminder to the public, when you do approach the microphone, please state your name and address, and your comments are limited to three minutes.
My name's Antoine Butler. My address is 2756 Chilton Drive. And I've kind of before, there are council before, thank you guys for giving us opportunities to share our concerns. I've also talked to some of the council members over the phone about a concern I have about a group of, or segment of human beings who are not being recognized as persons. And in the past, I've also brought in a sample resolution, and I was told that you guys write the resolutions. And so I also asked, well, you know, what would it take basically for you to sponsor a resolution that would recognize all human beings from their biological beginning until their natural death as persons in the city of Lafayette? And so basically, that's what I'm asking tonight. Maybe if there's, can't answer tonight, maybe there's a meeting I can come back to, maybe there's a website or a page that I could go to to get an answer on what are you looking for? Maybe petition numbers, calls? What would it take for a member of the council to sponsor such a resolution? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Any other public comments this evening? Mr. Campbell?
Madam President, I move adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Oh, you do have a question?
That's right. I just want to say thank you very much to everybody, Mr. Mayor, council members, Cindy, everybody, economic development, that's put in a lot of work towards the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. I'm sorry, I forgot. Erin McGrady, 1209 Elizabeth Street, Lafayette. Obviously, I'm the president of Bicycle Lafayette, and we're really excited about the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. I did just want to say that, I don't know if you're aware, but there's been four accidents involving cyclists in just the last month since May 29. And if you were to look at what happened in each one, there's very clear evidence that there is a big need for every different piece of the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan to prevent every individual accident that happened, from educating a cyclist to not ride the wrong way down the road and follow the rules, to having improved enforcement, so that when that person caused an accident and resulted in their injury and damage to someone else's property, they were actually written a citation, to educating drivers that cyclists are allowed to be in the lane, and that sometimes the safest place for a cyclist to be is in the middle of the lane. You know, there's just, there's a whole variety of reasons why this plan is going to be really great, and never-befores have been more clear than with four accidents happening in such a short period of time. So thank you for your consideration, and we'll see you guys in August.
Thank you, Mr. McGrady. Any other public comment?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Campbell.
I move adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.